Good evening, everyone. I call this regular school board meeting to order. It is April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six oh two. Dr. Salazar, do we have anyone here to help us with the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. Mr. Trevino and members of the board, this evening we have students from PLE, Palmer Laxa Elementary and Villarreal Elementary. Here to introduce us to the students who will be leading the pledge is principal of PLE, Ms. Celyon Tiveros.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Salazar. I am Celyon Tiveros, principal of Palmer Laxa Elementary, and I'm here to introduce our two students, starting with Cara Garcia. Parents are Mr. Isaac and Grecia Garcia. Cara is seven years old. She is a second grader. Cara is a leader in and out of the classroom. She is on the A honor roll and a member of the art club. In the classroom, she enjoys math. She also enjoys reading dinosaur books in her spare time and thinks about being an archaeologist one day. She would love to travel and find fossils. However, she also mentioned that she would love to be a model. She says it's a hard decision and hopes to make up her mind as soon as she gets older. Cara Garcia. Next, we have Dylan Mendez. Parents are Javier and Veronica Mendez. Dylan is also seven years old and in second grade. Dylan is a very responsible, kind, and dedicated student. His favorite subject is math because he enjoys solving problems and playing math games. At home, his hobbies are playing soccer and video games. He also enjoys making pizza with his older sister. When he grows up, he hopes to attend culinary schools to become a chef and open up his own restaurant. Dylan Mendez.
Sharon Snodgrass, principal of Villarreal Elementary.
Hello and good evening, President Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. I'm Sharon Snodgrass, the very proud principal of Villarreal Elementary, and I would like to introduce to you two of our outstanding students, Jacy Rivas and Jacob Ramirez. Jacy Rivas is a nine-year-old student in the fourth grade. She lives with her mother, father, two older sisters, two dogs, and two cats. Jacy loves to be involved in school activities such as EAE oral reading, student advisory council, and cheer. Some of her hobbies are listening to pop music, watching The Fresh Prince of Bel-Air, and swimming. But her favorite of all hobbies is reading a good book. When she grows up, she dreams of being a pop singer. So you never know, maybe we'll all be buying tickets to one of her concerts one day. Jacob Ramirez is ten years old and is a fourth grader at Villarreal. He lives with his mother, Jennifer Ramirez, and big sister Audrey. His favorite subjects are math, science, and coding. Jacob is a member of the robotics team, music club, esports club, and participates in the after-school program at Villarreal. Some of his hobbies include puzzles, video games, watching movies, and anything Pokemon-related. In the future, Jacob would like to be a scientist who helps discover how to use plants as medicine. Thank you, Jacob.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Would you please rise for the pledge?
If everyone will still remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated. And will the proud parents of these students please stand up and be recognized? Thank you so much for helping us and thank you for raising such great kids. It sounds like their futures are bright and we'll do everything we can to help them along with that, okay? Thank you all. Mr. Castillo, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ruben Trevino?
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Hi, I'm here, Martin Castillo. Mr. Jesús Amaya?
Present.
Ms. Sandra Garcia, Mrs. Jessica Quintero, and Mr. Juan Sierra, unable to make it tonight. Dr. Gonzalo Salazar? Ms. Casey Villajuarte.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castillo. Brings us to Roman numeral five in our agenda today, district recognitions. Number one, we have six, A B C D award, Above and Beyond the Call of Duty. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, the educators and the staff members and Los Fresnos work with their heart in their hand every day. And we are continuously inspired and impressed by the work that they do. But from time to time, you find staff members that are going above and beyond the call of duty. And so tonight was the first of, uh, the first recognition of the A B C D award, an award that we'd like to bring back monthly. Uh, we are going to introduce you to staff members that, as the award states, have gone above and beyond uh, to help others. And so we introduce you to Mrs. Villarreal, Executive Director of Support Services, and Mrs. Ada Amaro Chivaja, Deputy Superintendent, will also assist her today with these recognitions.
Good evening, Board President Trevino, school board members, and our Superintendent of School, Dr. Salazar. This evening, we're here to present, as you've heard, our first and Above and Beyond Call of Duty award. For short, we call it the A B C D award. The recipients of today's, um, awards have showed and have really exemplified, I'm sorry, have really exemplified the leadership definition. They have exemplified the fact that they can serve others with excellence, that they have gone beyond the call of duty to serve our students and our staff. They've actively listened and they passionately have provided the assistance that is needed. Our first recipient, you can find her working at the office of Lopez Riggins Elementary, where you might find children there who are in need of medical assistance. They might need a Band-Aid. They might need an ice pack. They might just need a smile and a word of assurance, but she's always there to provide that for them. On one given day, we had a school employee walk in, and this employee was not feeling well. As she was not feeling well, she asked for a blood pressure check. She was an expectant mother, and she was concerned for herself and for her child. As the nurse was providing the medical assessment, she saw the vital signs, and given her professionalism and her medical training, she was somewhat alarmed. And she asked if the employee would be willing to go to an emergency center to have her vitals checked there. The committed employee was reluctant to go. She had a job to do that day, and she almost denied the ill feeling that she was feeling at that point and said, "No, I'm okay, I'm okay." However, the nurse persisted, and she said, "I really feel like you need to go." And at that point, she contacted a family member, and the family member persuaded, as well as the nurse, for the employee to go to the emergency center. She ended up at the hospital, immediately was admitted, and gave birth immediately, then and there, to a child. So our nurse saved not only the possibility of that employee becoming in a chronic medical condition, prevented that, but she also was responsible for assisting with the birth of this child and that that child was able to be delivered in a most healthy way. I must also add to this recipient that she has served our district at one nurse's, at one nurse's office at Lopez Riggins Elementary for twenty-three years. She has volunteered during the COVID epidemic. She volunteered there in vaccinations. She was going throughout our district and assisting other nurses with the intake and the monitoring of the COVID vaccinations. She has always, always provided excellent care at her campus. And it is our honor to call her up. And will you help me welcome that we can celebrate our first Above and Beyond Call of Duty award? Our recipient is the nurse at Lopez Riggins, Ms. Patricia Venzidia. Ms. Venzidia, we have a beautiful plaque that reads the A B C D award, Above and Beyond the Call of Duty. Thank you so much for your service.
So today, we have two other recipients for the A B C D award. Many times, the campus administrator is called or must act, and local apprentice, uh, they have to act on behalf of a parent. Many times, they have to take the decision and take that role. This was the case of a middle school principal and an assistant principal. These administrators responded to an emergency as a student was transported by ambulance to a local hospital. Student's parents was notified and of the severity of this child's condition. However, the parent was not able to attend or to go directly to the hospital and attend to the child's medical needs. The principal continued to keep the father informed of the condition and requested his immediate presence. Parent was not able to respond as quickly as they needed. Therefore, administration, with consultation of the medical staff, had to step in and make medical decisions. Administration had to approve a CT scan. They had to sign and approve as a parent. The CT scan determined that this child's condition could not be treated at the local hospital, and it required that the student be airlifted to a San Antonio facility. Administrators were present at that time. Both answered the call of duty and ensured that the student received the appropriate medical care, and they did not leave the student's side until he was safe and received the proper care and until the parent was able to be present at the hospital. This principal has served as an administrator at our district for only one year. Yet, when you speak to her, it is like she's been here and part of our family for many years. She portrays a positive outlook accompanied by a passion for serving others. Her assistant, principal, has been in our district for seven years. She focused her attention to detail, and she advocates for all students and always serves with integrity. Both administrators display a leadership definition of serving others and leaving a legacy. Please welcome and celebrate Dr. Apolonia Renteria, Resaca Middle School Principal, and Mrs. Arna Fernández, Resaca Middle School Assistant Principal, as the recipient for the Above and Beyond the Call of Duty award. Thank you.
We continue with our recognitions, and here to introduce us to some of our staff members, who will in turn introduce us to kids, is the proud principal of Los Fresnos High School, Mr. Justin Stumble.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. It's hard to believe that it's already April. This year has been flying by. And so as you can see, we have had lots of success in our extracurricular, not just athletically, but academically and musically. And tonight, we're going to start by recognizing our LFHS Jazz Band. So I'm going to introduce our head band director and director of music, Mr. Andy Soloyz, to the lectern.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize the outstanding achievements of our band program and the students who make our program successful. If there are any parents of band members in the audience this evening, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your support of our programs. Our Jazz Band program at Los Fresnos High School consists of sixty students and three jazz bands. They practice twice a week after school during the spring semester to prepare for competitions and community events. Tonight, we are here to recognize the accomplishments of Jazz Band One, which is under the direction of David Leclerc. Jazz Band One has been regionally recognized as one of the finest jazz ensembles in South Texas. They were selected as outstanding jazz band at the two thousand and nineteen Rio Grande Valley Jazz Band Festival, and within the past month have earned distinction as the outstanding performing group at the fifty-fifth Annual Texas A&amp;M Kingsville Jazz Festival, a competition that included forty-three other groups. Additionally, they were named outstanding jazz band at the Longhorn Jazz Festival hosted by the University of Texas at Austin. This distinction allowed them to be featured performers in the concert, the evening concert with the UT Jazz Orchestra. And it was an experience that they're going to remember the rest of their lives. I don't think there was a dry eye coming off the stage that night. In addition to the honors above, our Jazz students earn the highest number of chairs in the Region Twenty-eight Jazz Band. And I would like to thank everyone for their support of our band program, but I would especially like to thank the students for their hours of hard work and their commitment to excellence, both in band and in the classroom. So introducing them now. Saxophones, All-Region Jazz Band, and fifth in the state, outstanding soloist, Damon Rodriguez. Elizalde Gamboa. Damian Casada. Isabella Chavez. Trumpets, All-Region Jazz Band, three-time All-State Band Member, seventh in the state, outstanding soloist, Elena Garza. All-Region Jazz Band, All-State Band Member, outstanding soloist, Armando Vega. All-Region Jazz Band, Alonso Rivas. All-Region Jazz Band, Jonathan Quintero. And now for the trombones. All-Region Jazz Band, outstanding soloist, Victor Ruiz. Mark Torres. Luis Beas. And Danny Morales, bass trombone. And onto the rhythm section. All-Region Jazz Band, third in the state, outstanding soloist, pianist, Marco Acosta. All-Region Jazz Band, on bass, Thomas Hamilton. All-Region Jazz Band, outstanding soloist and outstanding overall musician at the Longhorn Jazz Festival, on drums, Manny Blanco. And percussion auxiliary, Sebastian Castaneda. Their director is David Leclerc.
And now to the lectern to introduce us to some of our fall, sorry, spring/winter sports teams. Athletic Director, David Cantú.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, it's an honor to be here again. This time, we recognize, uh, our athletes who represent us on the hard courts, on the pitch, and in the weight room, really. So it's an honor, and we'll get right to it with head coach Jesus Gutierrez with our tennis team.
Thank you. President Trevino, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, thank you for having us here. Um, on behalf of my team, Coach Retta, myself, thank you for the opportunity to present our two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-three Los Fresnos High School tennis team. Um, pretty big shoes to follow for Coach Sandlin, and he was here for a long time. Uh, and, I mean, he's amazing, right? What can I say about him? So anyways, now you have me. Um, all right, so, no. Uh, our season started, uh, in early August, and we managed to, uh, you know, just fight for everything that we got, and we got all the way up to, uh, two times by district qualifier. So we did that twice in a row, which is great. Hopefully, we do it again next year and go a little further. Um, yeah, our team tennis season didn't end until October, and immediately after that, we had all the individuals happen. Uh, lots of good stuff happening throughout, uh, lots of, uh, first places and second places for individuals, too many to name, to be honest with you. Um, and then a couple of weeks ago, we had our district meet. Um, and for the first time in over fifteen years, we had a boys', uh, district champ in Los Fresnos. And it's Marco Renallos. Uh, they qualified him for regionals. We went out there. He had a tough match, and, uh, that's where it stayed, but, uh, it was good stuff, great experience, a lot of great tennis was played. Um, let's see, um, so anyways, um, before I get started with introducing the kids, I want to thank Coach Cantú, Coach Schuster, and, uh, everyone here for giving me the opportunity to be up here and to do what we do. Um, great stuff, huh? Um, and, uh, countless other coaches helping me, guiding me through, uh, with any question or concern. Um, and very special thank you to all the parents for allowing your kids to come out and be part of this great, um, thing we got going here, right, this team. Um, and last but not least, the students, the players. Uh, without them, we wouldn't have a team, right? So, um, let me introduce you to our players. Uh, first, we have Olivia Noyola. Louise Frankie. Emily Avila. Kendall Frankie. Savannah Gonzalez. Fernanda Garza. Jimena Peña. And Cassandra Suniga. For our boys, we have Marco Renado, district champ. We got John Frankie. Leo Avendano. Moses Rivera. And my assistant coach, Coach Retta, who came in clutch this year. Thank you very much.
Next, you'll meet our girls' soccer team. Our girls' soccer team finished second in district, and we're bi-district champions and area finalists. They're led by head coach Juan Luna.
Good afternoon. Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar, thank you for having us here today. I'm Coach Luna, head coach of the Lady Falcon Soccer Team. Uh, the following group of girls have worked hard throughout the academic year and demonstrated, uh, the capacity to overcome various challenges. Uh, please allow me to introduce the following group of girls. Number three, Saheli Guzmán. Captain Daniela Alegría. Number five, Bianca Gonzalez. Senior Eileen Gonzalez. Number seven, María Barrientos. Number eight, Briseida Suniga. One of the leading goal scorers for our district, Madison Harris. Freshman, Madison Harris. Senior America Guerra. Senior Savannah Esquivel. Number twelve, Vivian Granados. Number fourteen, Alexis Oalde. Freshman, Haley Garcia. Number seventeen, Erin Encina. Captain Natalie Garcia. Freshman, Sofia Barajas. Michelle Gonzalez. Our goalkeeper's senior, Emma Caraveo. And our freshman goalkeeper, Tatiana Estrada. And last but not least, Coach Jessica Montero. Thank you very much for having us here.
Before we let you go, can the proud parents of these student athletes please stand up and be recognized? Thank you, parents.
Thank you. The next group that we're going to recognize is our boys soccer team. Our boys soccer team also finished second place in an extremely difficult district, and we're also bi-district champions and area finalists. Their head coach is Michael Miller.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the 2022-2023 Los Fresnos High School Boys varsity soccer team. This season, we finished with a record of nineteen wins, seven losses, and six ties. Couple highlights in our season included traveling to San Antonio and defeating San Antonio Southwest, two to one, ending their thirty-three game home unbeaten streak. In district, we faced Brownsville Rivetta in the second round, one game behind them in the standings, and after falling behind three to nothing, our boys rallied, scoring three goals in the last ten minutes to tie the game. Unfortunately, Rivetta scored in overtime and defeated us four to three, ending our district title dreams, and we finished the season in second place. In the playoffs, we defeated the La Jolla High Coyotes, one to zero, before falling to San Antonio Harland, two to one, in overtime, ending our season. In the four years, the past four years, these seniors that are here have been a part of the program. The Los Fresnos Boys Soccer Program has won their first two district titles in school history, qualified for the playoffs in all four years, the first senior class to ever accomplish that feat, won two playoff games, and lost two times in the second round in heartbreaking fashion. They've represented the school and their community with not only passion on the field, but class off the field. Thank you. Over the last three years, ten players out of our program have gone on to play college soccer, and I'm excited to say that at least three more seniors this year have the opportunity to continue their soccer careers. So let's recognize the players that came today. You know, give them a little bit of synopsis, so hold the applause till I finish, please. Captain Senior Diego Moreno. Diego's a four-year member of the program, four-year varsity letter winner, also was second-team goalkeeper of the year in our district last year. Junior Aiden Lopez, he's a three-year member of our program, two years in the varsity team, and he's been nominated this year for district, all districts. Senior Andres Lopez, Andres is a four-year member of our program, two years in the varsity level. He was twenty-twenty-two, last year he was district honorable mention, this year he's nominated for all districts, and he's also a member of the UIL academic team. Senior Max Eskamia, Max is a four-year member of the Falcons program and a one-year member of the varsity team. Senior Captain Ramaldo Gonzalez, Ramaldo's a four-year member of our team, four-year varsity player. He was in twenty-twenty-one, he's district honorable mention, twenty-twenty-two, first team all district, and this year he's nominated for the district defensive player of the year. Senior Captain Ivan Galvan. Ivan was the twenty-twenty-one Brownsville Herald newcomer of the year. Twenty-twenty-two, he was all district first team, and this year he's been nominated for the utility player of the year. Senior Rene Palomino, Rene's a four-year member of the Falcons, two years in the varsity. Last year, he was second-team all district, and this year he is nominated for all districts as well. Junior, sorry, I'll get to another year. Junior Alan Aviedo, he's a three-year member of the program, his first year at varsity. He has been nominated this year for the newcomer of the year in our district. Sophomore Ethan Nalasko, Ethan's a two-year member of the program and has been on varsity both his years. Junior Alexis Escobedo, Alexis is a three-year member of our program, two years on varsity. Last year, he was district honorable mention, this year he's been nominated for the first team. And Abraham Nalasko, Abraham's senior and four-year member of our program and three years of varsity experience. Thank you.
Next, we have our powerlifting teams, our boys and our girls, are coached by Jaime Vela. And as you know, we're amongst state champions when we talk about powerlifting, and it's just an honor to see how they work all year, and to see how they push each other and represent Los Fresnos. So, Head Coach Jaime Vela.
Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar, I'm Coach Salazar, just like Coach introduced me. I want to start off by introducing our coaches first. They're vital, vital, vital in our program, and I could not do this without them. And I believe they're probably the best coaches in the state, from my opinion, you know. So first, I'm going to introduce Coach Karen Gonzalez. And Coach Greg Tenya. So now I'm going to be introducing our regional and state qualifiers, and I'm going to introduce our boys and our girls together. When we go to any meet, doesn't matter where we go, boys and girls compete together, we coach boys and girls together, and they're both vital to each other. So if we have a meet where it's just boys, the girls go and they help because we can't do everything on our own. And when the girls are lifting, the boys go and they help. So it works together. So I'm going to introduce the boys, and I'm going to introduce the girls, and then I'll tell you the accolades as they go. So first off, your twenty-twenty-three regional and state qualifiers for boys, we have Noe Gutierrez, he is a state qualifier. George Martinez, also a state qualifier. Ezekio Aguilar, state qualifier. Edgar Ochoa, state qualifier. And Elias Aguilar, regional qualifier. Now I'm going to introduce our girls, and you are looking at the twenty-twenty-three regional and state champions for the eighth consecutive year. Just to let you know a little bit of the process that we go through, so every year as the season ends, we're looking at the new girls and new boys coming in. So we're constantly looking for who can help the team coming up. And the first thing they always talk about is, we don't want to be the ones that don't win states. We don't want to be the ones that, you know, don't carry the ball over to the next year. And these girls are the epitome of that. We returned five girls that were at state last year, and we ended up taking seventeen this past year, seventeen. So a lot of those were first-time newers. And I'm going to go ahead and introduce them and call them out one at a time and tell you where they ended up. So Clarissa Rodriguez, state champion in the ninety-seven-pound weight class. Victoria Rodriguez, regional qualifier. Allison Saavedra, state qualifier. Fernanda Arellano, state qualifier. Alina Villafuerte, regional qualifier. Allison Obiello, regional qualifier. Solem, Solem Mendoza, state qualifier. Sole was also a top-five finisher at state, so she got herself a medal and came home with some points that helped the team place first. Priscilla Mendoza, state qualifier. Kiara Villanueva, state qualifier, also a top-five finisher and got points as well in our team. Michaela Atkinson, state qualifier. Caitlin Malonado, regional qualifier. Giovanna Balboa, state qualifier. And Ronnie Saldana, state qualifier. Uh, real quick, just before I let you guys out, all of these boys and girls put in work every single day. In the summer, during Christmas vacation, during Thanksgiving vacation, when everybody else is home, they're in the weight room. And believe me, if I tell them, hey, we're going to take a couple of days off, they're upset about it because they want me to go in there. So we try our best to give them every opportunity to be their best, and if that means taking time away from our families to be there, we do it, and they appreciate it. And thank you so much.
So you've seen our music, some of our music program and our athletic program. Now we're going to focus on our CTSO, some of our current technical student organizations. So without stealing too much of his thunder, I'm going to go and ask our CT Director, Mr. Alondo Gara, to talk about some of the programs that are going to be recognized here tonight.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President, Board Members, Dr. Salazar. Today, we're looking at six out of the thirteen CTSOs that we offer today. I wish I could bring them all, but we'll come back next month, okay? Uh, we'll start off with Skills USA, and I'll let the teachers kind of talk about what they do in those programs, and the students that we kind of brought over are the ones that went to state, okay? First up, Ms. Mendoza with Skills USA under AV.
Good afternoon, everybody. So I'm going to start with the names of the students, wait, before I go into that. So I am the sponsor for audio and video technology, and these two students competed in areas where they were up against other students across other districts, competing in media industry roles. So I will start with Diego Trevino. Diego competed in a job interview category where he was put in an actual job interview scenario for careers in the media industry. All right, our next student is Aaron Rodriguez. He competed. He competed in video production and audio and radio category where he created an audio clip covering current events in the Corpus Christi community. All right, so throughout this school year, these two young men have shown exceptional leadership. Both Diego and Aaron have the drive, the skills, and the passion to pursue anything they desire, and I'm so proud of you both, and I can't wait to see you make a difference in this world.
And just to add to that, there were fourteen students that competed in the area, and four went to state. Okay, we have two students missing today. Next, we got HOSA. And to lead it off, that's going to be Mr. Moniz to talk about HOSA.
Good evening, uh, thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Salazar, and Board Members and Executive Directors. My name is Luis Moniz, and I'm one of Los Fresnos High School HOSA Advisors. I have the honor to present to you students who qualified for state competition in Brown Rock, Texas back in March. So we have Juniors Nick Costilla and Rebecca Loera. They placed first place in CPR and first state in area competition. We have Senior Valerie Chavez and Junior Elian Tolosa. They were representing healthcare issues exam. And we have Junior Genevieve Barron, who qualified to compete in international competition in Dallas, Texas. Thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you. Uh, next area we're looking at is TAFE. And I'll meet Ms. Garcia, she is a sponsor for that area.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ida Garcia. I am the education and training teacher at the high school, and my CTSO is TAFE, T-A-F-E. And I'd like to first, well, my, this is my first year going to TAFE, and the girls too, so we were very, very nervous going. We did not know what to expect, but we're ready for next year now. So I'm going to first introduce, they are state qualifiers, but the first one, Marian Barasquito, eleventh grader. She competed in a, in a public speaking and also inside our schools. So if you ever get a chance to go on YouTube and watch the video that they put together, it's awesome. It does showcase the high school and the CT programs that we have at the high school. Second, we have our senior, Isabella Cordova Orozco, and she wrote a children's, she competed in children's literature and also inside our schools. And next, we have Janessa Barbosa Senior, who also, she wrote a book, children's literature, and also competed in inside our schools. So the four, we had four girls that competed inside our schools, one's not here tonight, but all of them qualified for state. Thank you.
So I look forward for next year. So this is your first time, and the first time you make it to state. So, this is your first time, and the first time you're making it to state? So, next year's national, right?
So, all those future educators, keep in mind, we're always looking for good people. Keep us in mind.
Okay. And next, we got, uh, Falcon Law. Ms. Quintero's a sponsor, but she's out today. Um, just to kinda let you know a little bit about it, twenty-six students participated in the area, twenty-five made it to state, okay? And we got, uh, kinda see why it runs in the family now. Uh, uh, Larisquita is gonna speak a little bit about the program, uh, what happened at state, okay?
Good evening, we are Falcon Law. We participated in different events held at the state competition in Dallas, Texas. We competed over a hundred students. It was an experience that we will forever remember and take with us in our law careers. Each of us worked really hard for each of our events. Thank you.
With crash investigation, first place went to Yonelli Oliver. Ms. Mariana Larisquito. Cell extraction, second place went to Ms. Giovanna Balboa.
And if you haven't met the CTE counselor, that's Ms. Grenier right there. She does a great job making sure our students are in the right classes and making sure that, uh, all credits are, are placed in the right area. Thank you. Next, we have, uh, FFA with Mr. Omar Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name's Omar Gonzalez. I'm one of the four act teachers here in Los Presnos. Um, it is my honor to be an advisor here at Los Presnos FFA 'cause Los Presnos FFA is not just the envy of other schools here in the valley, but it's the envy of many chapters throughout the state. Uh, we are ve- we are very appreciative of the support this board has shown Los Presnos FFA over the years that I've been here and, uh, continue looking forward to competing with these kids that we have here. Uh, today, I wanna introduce seven of our nine cell makers that we had this year at, uh, Royal Grand Valley Livestock Show. First off, we have Ms. Emily Vodigas, who is a ninth grader from LFU. She had a second-place goat this year at Art Royal Grand Valley Livestock Show. Madison Stumble, ninth grader at LFU, third place with her market goat. Ms. Victoria Nunez, twelfth grader at Los Presnos High School, second place with her market goat. Ms. Lorna Flores, third grader, Palmer Lasko, first place with her Hampshire market pig. Grayson Rowe, eleventh grader, Los Presnos High School, first place with his dark OPB market pig. Chloe Grenier, first place, Home Furnishings, Shop, FFA Shop Projects. And Carly Grenier, second place, uh, Tabletop Cutting Board, FFA Shop Projects. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Uh, next one, we have welding, with Mr. Gomboa.
Hello, Board members. Good afternoon. Uh, we wound up going to a running competition, and we wound up competing against, uh, up to, I think there were like, uh, over eighty students from the, uh, five different schools. And we wound up getting, uh, first place, uh, Carlos Besto, uh, Benton, and second place, Ernesto Rivas. And then we also have, um, Sakai Mercado, George, uh, Vallejo, Maximum. Gonzalez, Enrique Guevara, and Sarah Rodriguez. They wound up getting third place on the, on the project that they wound up building, uh, in the shop.
Again, most of these students have multiple AWS certifications. Uh, AWS is different type of certification for these students. And like I said, most of these students have two or three of those certifications. Board members, thank you very much. Again, we'll be here next, uh, month for the other seven that we got. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. CCTE continues to amaze us with all of their certifications and impacting the lives of these, uh, students. So, we thank you for their work. Um, moving along on our agenda, Roman numeral six, public audience, no one signed up, uh, for public audience, as well as, uh, Roman numeral number seven, public comment, no one has signed up. Which brings us to Roman numeral eight, district presentations. Number one, early literacy and math goals. Number two, overview of mental health services procedures. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, this evening, we present, um, I'm gonna call him Mrs. Landry, our chief academic officer, uh, to present early literacy and math goals. Today's presentation complies with requirements of House Bill Three. Um, you're going to hear about the growth mindset that we have in the district, how, uh, we are continuously assessing our current reality and setting new goals. And, uh, you know, for years, we celebrated achievement. And we've gone from celebrating achievement to celebrating growth. Uh, and we're, we're, we're sustaining a culture of a growth mindset throughout, throughout our district. And you'll see that, I, I point that out 'cause I think you'll see it throughout this presentation. Mrs. Landry.
Thank you. Mr. Trevino, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. Tonight, um, I have the privilege to once again bring before you our early literacy and math goals. In 2019, uh, the legislature, uh, implemented House Bill Nine, um, I'm sorry, House Bill Three, as, um, an opportunity for us to focus on early literacy and math, uh, in our elementary schools and CCMR for graduation requirements at the high school. So, they kind of looked at our bookends. And so, today, we're gonna talk to you a little bit about those early literacy and math goals. I'll come back next month, and we'll talk a little bit about our CCMR goals. Uh, when the, the legislature passed House Bill Three, they were focused on the reading attainment of third graders and the math attainment of third graders, knowing that students who are on a, a clear path to proficient literacy and math in third grade have, um, a solid future in front of them. And students who are falling behind at that point, it will take years to catch them up. And so, uh, the state, uh, asked us to set some goals. And so, I'm gonna kinda take you through our third-grade goals and then the progress measures that we put in place for pre-K, kinder, first, second, and even third grade, because we know it does not all happen in third grade. It is a progression through early childhood. These are goals that we brought to you when this, when House Bill Three was first implemented, and you approved these goals. Each year, I bring these back to you as a, um, follow-up as we adjust those goals based on the performance of our students. So, in this, uh, in this slide here, you're gonna see what the actual board goal is. It focuses on the third-grade literacy and math performance on STAR. And what the state is saying is, we wanna look at students who not just approach grade level, but they meet and master grade level. And the state had set kind of a thirty, sixty, ninety goal, saying thirty percent of our students will hit masters, sixty percent of those students will hit meets, and ninety percent of our students will hit approaches. And if you follow that formula, your campus is in a good place to receive an A. And we know that we want A campuses. And so, these goals have been set based on that meets and masters criteria, where the state says if sixty percent of your students are hitting meets and masters, then your campus is in that position for an A. And so, what we have done is, in twenty-one, you can kind of see the STAR actual. Remember in twenty, it was, uh, we didn't have STAR in twenty. So, in twenty-one, uh, that was a group of students who were on campus at that time. Not all students tested because we were still in COVID at that time. And so, we adjusted our goals based on our new reality when we came back from COVID. We knew that students weren't exactly where we had left them in twenty-nineteen STAR. And so, we've had to do some changes there and work to fill the gaps and to accelerate learning. So, we reset goals in twenty-two. Um, and then twenty-two in the gray there, you'll see on both the left side, the literacy, and the right side on the math, where our campuses fell as far as students who met or mastered their STAR. And then we continue to set goals for twenty-three and for twenty-twenty-four. That's actually when House Bill Three expires. We'll see if they ask us to continue setting board goals beyond that time. Um, but you can see there, with all of our campuses, of course, we're striving for that sixty percent that will show that stu- that, that our campuses are ready for that A rating. But, like I said, it does not all happen in third grade. So, we begin measuring success in this area in pre-K. And so, I'm gonna take you through, pre-K is a different assessment. Obviously, they don't take the STAR. And so, what we have for pre-K is our circle assessment. And this assessment is measuring achievement. We do not look at growth yet. It's their first year in school, so we don't have anything to compare it to prior to that year. But, these are scores of our students at the end of the year, and it measures kindergarten readiness. And of course, our goal is for a hundred percent of our students who attend pre-K with us, we want for them to be kinder-ready when they move into kindergarten the following year. Of course, we know with pre-K, uh, we have students who have never been in a school setting before, so we're working on some of those things. And we also have students that have yet to be identified that may have some additional special needs, and we do that through Child Find. So, um, while our goal is a hundred percent, some of our campuses, you'll see, aren't quite there. But, our early childhood coordinator is working with those campuses to identify methods and ways that we can hopefully get there. You'll see on, on the right side, the math, uh, we have several campuses that are right there, close to where we wanna be. And so, again, this is measured on the circle exam that our pre-payers take at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. And this is measuring kindergarten readiness for them. In kindergarten through third grade, the test changes again. We're now looking at the math growth assessment in reading and in math. These numbers look a little different than pre-K numbers. Remember, pre-K, we were looking at achievement and kinder readiness? On this assessment, we're actually looking at growth. So, these are students, not how they achieve. So, please don't look at a fifty percent and think that, oh, my goodness, this student is not doing as well as we would like them to do, or this group of students. This is meaning that our students are meeting their growth goals. And so, I'm gonna use this little bell curve chart to, to show you and, and to remind you. On that fiftieth percentile, our students, the way that the growth test is measured, is they assume in the average classroom, and we know we like to be above average, right? But, in the average classroom, there is a normal distribution. Fifty percent of students will not meet their goals, and fifty percent of students will meet their goals. And then, there's about one standard deviation from that, which equals about fifteen percentage points. So, if you fall anywhere from thirty-five percent to sixty-five percent of your students meeting or exceeding their growth goals, that's considered average. Anything above sixty-five percent, we know that something really special is happening in that classroom because they're beating the normal distribution of a bell curve. And so, those are teachers that were seeking out and finding out what they're doing in their classrooms to ensure that students aren't just meeting a year's worth of growth, but even beyond a year's worth of growth. And so, our belief is, once students pick kindergarten, if we're sending nearly a hundred percent of our students to kindergarten as kinder-ready, our goal from that point forward is to grow every student a year or more. And it's, that way, we can ensure by the time they get to third grade, those students will meet or master their assessment on STAR. So, we're looking at these percentages, again, going with the, the district, uh, what, what their averages were. And we know when we came back after COVID, we weren't performing exactly where our goals had us and where we wanted to be. And so, we have adjusted our goals and continue to work with our campuses to exceed that sixty-five percent is what we're hoping for for every campus. 'Cause that means something really special is happening in there because they're beating that curve. So, you can see across the board, our campuses all mostly fall within that average to above-average growth. And so, some campuses who are already there, we continue to set the goal beyond. We don't say that you've arrived because you've hit that sixty-five percent or higher. We continue to set the bar a little bit higher each year. Now, as we go through this, and you look at first grade and second grade and third grade, it is a little difficult to put this comparison out there because what we do have to remember is, we're not looking at the same cohort of students year after year. But, what we believe is that as teachers develop best practices and, and master instructional strategies in the classroom, as we have a written and viable curriculum that ensures that students are learning what needs to be taught in that grade level, we believe that even though it's a different cohort of students coming in, that teachers can build on the successes from the previous year. So, we continue to set the goals a little bit above an attainable amount, but a little bit above where the previous cohort performed. Does anybody have any questions about that? So, these are our first-grade literacy and math goals. We move on to our second-grade goals, and all of this is in your packet. Um, and you can see here, in second grade literacy, you can see that the performance maybe isn't quite as high as what we're seeing in math. We're excited about the numbers that we're seeing in math there. But, in second grade, I just wanna note, for the math assessment, it does change in second grade. The kinder and first grade assessment has reading supports embedded in the reading portion of the exam because, you know, reading is developmental and it's early childhood. And students learn to read just completely normally at different times. And so, those supports are embedded within the test. But, in second grade, those supports begin to be removed from the assessment. And so, that's why we see maybe a little bit of a dip there. But, you can see by the time we get to third grade, we're testing these students at the beginning and middle of the year in order to ensure that they're ready for those STAR exams, which takes us all the way back to our original goal, to ensure that they, that at least sixty percent of our students are hitting meets and masters. And those are our literacy goal update for this year. Is there any questions?
Miss Landry, just a comment. So, I was thinking whenever you were like, okay, pre-K, and I'm thinking to myself, oh, my goodness, we are starting to mark them at pre-K. And so, I work with this population, two- and three-year-olds, um, and I see, uh, we, we work at Head Starts a lot. And I really do, uh, champion the, the Head Starts because they're really preparing them for school. They're learning those skills. And your comment was, you know, that sometimes we have to, there's a little gap there, right? Because the kil- the kids don't know they need to sit and attend and listen and take turns and develop all of those foundational skills that they're gonna need once they go to school. I'm curious to, to see if, and I'm sure we have a, a good portion of our kids go through the Head Start program, but I wonder if that has an impact on... But I wonder if that has an impact on how they begin to maybe outshine some of the other students that, that don't go through that program? I would just be curious to see. But, I mean, it's just, uh, I, I think it's great that we're in this growth mindset. I, I really do get behind that a heck of a lot more than just the standardized testing and, yeah, we're teaching to the test and, uh, you know, and we, which we do great at, right? But, but I really do, uh, believe this, this, it makes your jobs a lot difficult. I know that. But, uh, I, I think, I appreciate this more. And I think that, you know, our students will definitely continue to do better, you know, once we get through this hump and, and, and with the things that I'm sure administration's gonna put in place and things, you know, I'm sure we're gonna get there. So I just wanna thank you for that, all your hard work and, and your team's hard work. Thank you. Any ques, any questions from the board, comment? Thank you, Mrs. Laundre. The next item we have is an overview of mental health services procedures. This item was a request from the, from the board. We've invited Mrs. Sandra Reese, Director of Counselors, to come back and, and share some information on specifically the procedures for, uh, referring students. We'll still give you a little bit of an overview of the role of our counselors and other partners that help us provide these services. Mrs. Reese?
This is Corinio, members of the board, House Department of Health. Thank you again for having me this evening. Again, I was with you at the February workshop. Um, so I wanted to make sure that what I shared with you tonight is going to extend upon what I shared with you that evening. Um, and really looking at specifically how our school counseling program plays into that role of identifying and providing support for our students with their mental health needs. So first, I wanted to introduce or remind us that we do have a school counseling program. So our school counseling, um, our school counselors is not just a department, but there is also a program that our school counselors follow. And that is based on our Texas model. And it's the longer term for that is our Texas model for comprehensive school counseling program. So this is what the state has, um, provided to guide our counselors as far as what their specific roles should be within the schools and help them to navigate mental health concerns in order to help our students achieve the ultimate goal, which is achieving academic career and social emotional success. So our Texas Education Code does specify what the duties of our certified school counselors are. Um, and yes, our school counselors do need to go through, as a second bullet point mentioned there, um, are, do need to, um, have those appropriate knowledge, skills, and credentials to be able to improve performance of students. And that is done through their degree. They do have to have that counseling degree that does have specific coursework in, um, different mental health topics. And going back to that first bullet point, which is their primary role, which is to counsel students to fully develop their, again, academic, career, personal, and social abilities. So going into a little bit more detail on our Texas model, again, all of our counselors do follow that Texas model. And there are four different delivery components. That is comprised of our guidance curriculum, our responsive services, individual planning, and our system support. So each counselor, depending on their grade level, are going to follow different percentages as far as how much time they spend working in each of the four components. Um, so we might have, for example, on the guidance curriculum, our elementary counselors spending more of their time going into the classrooms, providing those, what we think of as our guidance lessons on different topics. Whereas our secondary counselors are going to do that more at specific points during the school year. Um, so for example, in our guidance curriculum, our secondary counselors do, well, let me go back. All counselors at the beginning of the school year will do an introduction of the counselor to all students to ensure that students, of course, know who their school counselor or counselors are and to ensure that students are aware of what their role is on the campus. In addition to that, making sure that students know how to, if they wanna visit the counselor, if at any point they wanna see the counselor, that they know what the method is to do that at that specific campus. Um, so that would be the first thing that all of our counselors do at the beginning of the school year. Then our secondary counselors, again, as I mentioned, elementary counselors will have different topics throughout the month. We again, that goes back to our, um, at the last meeting I shared with you, our SBL curriculum, Character Strong, which is called Purposeful People at the elementary level. And every month, they have a different topic that they, um, utilize, that they focus on for their guidance curriculum. Then in the secondary level, at the beginning of the year, our, one of the first presentations that our counselors go in and do is that SOS presentation that I had shared with you last time, that signs of suicide, which, um, again, tells the students, where they share with the students these processes if they have, um, themselves feelings of potential self-harm or if they see a friend or a classmate of theirs who's exhibiting those signs, um, how to address those, to act on it, care a trusted adult, uh, or let the student know that they care, and then move on to tell a trusted adult. And then again, going back to those reporting procedures is how to do that. Other guidance lessons that we've had include our bullying prevention at the secondary level, um, also presentations on things like vaping, anti-tobacco usage, and so forth. So again, looking at what are the needs of the campus. Then our responsive services are, are preventative, remedial, or crisis support for students in their time of need. So, um, when we have those students who are just in immediate crisis at that heightened level of needing some type of, um, mental health support, that's where our, our counselors, um, come in and provide those responsive services. Our goal is always gonna be that through the, um, implementation of guidance curriculum, that that's gonna help, um, prevent some of those responsive services being needed to help our students, um, teach them coping skills and so forth to not get them to that crisis level. But of course, we are gonna have students in that level of crisis. Um, or the remedial would be following up with those students if, after they have exhibited some type of crisis. Then our individual planning is where we're gonna be looking at goal setting with students, looking again at our academic, career, personal, and social goals. And then our system support's gonna be two pieces here. Um, part of it's gonna be program management activities. So that's where they're gonna be planning their activities, planning their lessons, planning their calendars, um, doing that needs assessment as far as what are their needs on the campus. And then our support services. So those are our indirect student services. For example, when they may be presenting at a campus meeting, um, meeting with parents, providing, um, other supports to, to the school campus. Okay? So, um, ideally, our school counselors, whenever they are doing different activities on campus, it should fall within one of these four, um, delivery components. Now, looking specifically, again, we've talked about how is it that our counselors are addressing mental health needs of our students? So we do that in a multi-tiered system of support model. So looking at three different tiers, and the lower the tier, the more students are identified as being addressed in that tier. So our first tier is gonna be our universal services. So as I mentioned a moment ago, those presentations that we do at the classroom level, so doing those SOS presentations at the secondary level, those, um, bullying prevention sessions, et cetera. So those are gonna be done to the full student body. So identifying a hundred percent of our students to receive those, those, um, services. Then through tier one, we may identify students who are going to need additional, something additional to that. So that's gonna lead us into our tier two services, which would be our small group counseling sessions or individual counseling. That's been a goal of our counselors this school year, is to be able to provide more group counseling services. So looking at, if you recall, last time I shared with you all, um, our elementary counselors who have been providing grief counseling groups to the students because we have, unfortunately, we do see a lot of families, um, who were impacted, again, by COVID or other, um, other issues that have caused our students to be dealing with those family losses. So, um, that would be a model, or that would be an example of what we would do in our tier two. So our, again, our small groups, our individual counseling. Then we're gonna have those students who either are gonna need to move directly up to tier one, from, excuse me, to tier three. Or perhaps we've worked with them through tier two, but seeing that they have not, um, met their goals, they're gonna need more intensive support than what the school counselor is gonna be able to provide. So that's when we are going to refer them to outside services. And I'll share with you in a minute what those services are. Okay? Um, now, for those tier three services, again, that's gonna be, um, based off of, whether it's just working with the counselor and the counselor referring, or we may have incidences where administration, in working with the student, um, is going to recommend for counseling services, or teachers, um, or parents. A lot of times at the secondary level especially, when, I'll show you some numbers in a moment, is when we'll have our parents come to the school counselor and asking for that help. So once the school counselor has met with the student, again, if it's been determined that it's gonna be something more outside of the scope of what they're able to work with the student on during the school day, that's when we will refer to outside services. So when we talk about outside services, we're gonna be looking at, again, I mentioned our school counselors do have certain training as part of their master's programs in mental health. We do also do professional development. But again, our professional development is gonna be in those other realms. We're also gonna do professional development about academic, um, college career and so forth. Um, so they do have, again, training on mental health. But what we need for some of our students is to bring in somebody who has more specialized training, specifically in mental health. And typically, those are gonna be LPC, Licensed Professional Counselors. So I might have sha, shared that term with you last time around, but I wanted to make sure that I went into a little bit more detail on what an LPC is, what that credential is. So an LPC is somebody who has been credentialed by the State Board, State Board of Professional Counselors. So this is part of the Texas Behavioral Health Executive Council, and they oversee licensed, um, the licensure process. So in the state of Texas, LPCs are trained to assess individuals, develop treatment plans, provide counseling, and consult or make referrals on a variety of mental health and therapeutic issues. So requirements to become a professional counselor, so you must complete a counseling degree that is at least sixty credit hours. Um, not all master's degrees are that amount. So many times, once, uh, somebody who has gone into a counseling-related field has to go back and take additional coursework to earn that sixty college credit hours. They then have to go through exams, examination. So either, and these are both national exams, the National Counselor Exam, or the National Clinic Mental Health Counselor Exam, as well as Texas Jurisprudence Exam, before they can even apply for licensure. So again, getting their sixty hours, passing those two assessments, then they're able to apply for licensure. Then, once they apply for licensure, they are granted and, or they apply to become what is actually called a LPC Associate. That term has changed recently. It used to be LPC Intern, um, but they've changed that terminology, so it's now LPC Associate. And once they become an LPC Associate, under the supervision of an LPC Supervisor, they must go through three thousand clock hours of supervised counseling internship. Okay? And in order to become an LPC Supervisor, they, um, somebody must have been a fully licensed LPC for at least five years. So, um, one thing that I do wanna mention is that, looking at, um, okay, I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry. So one of the things that we established a few years ago, and we're, again, I shared this with y'all last time, that we're really proud of, is our Mental Health and Wellness Training Clinic. So again, this is onsite within the school district, housed at our CCA Center. We started this last fall, school year, and it started out with one night a week. It has grown now to three nights a week, where we have our LPC Supervisor, who we are very blessed to have, a school counselor within the district who, um, graduated when she got her degree, decided that she was also gonna earn her LPC, um, certification or her licensure. She, um, then decided that she was going to get her supervisor credential specifically to be able to serve at our onsite clinic. So what we've done is we have, um, now two other of our school counselors who earned that credential to become LPC Associates and are completing those three thousand hours required to become full LPC under our LPC Supervisor. Now, Cameron County has been identified as a county to have a behavioral health workforce shortage by Texas Health and Human Services. Um, so like many other areas in the, in the state, we do have, again, that shortage of mental health providers. So this is one of the ways that we foster growth within our school counseling department by pro, by promoting our school counselors to earn that LPC credential. So the two LPC Associates have shared with me that if it were not for this program, they would not have gone on to, um, attempt the LPC exam and to be working on their LPC. I do have three other counselors right now who are working on studying for that exam because, again, it's, it's a challenging exam. And they're hoping to take that this summer to be able to hopefully participate with us in this program in the fall semester or next school year. Um, so again, giving our school counselors that opportunity to be able to provide that higher tier because, again, what they're working on in the clinic, they're able to then bring that back to the campus level or to the school district level when we have crises and we need to bring together our crisis support team, um, to be able to provide that strong level of mental health support. Um, so for our mental health and wellness training clinic, we do also have graduate students, because as a graduate student in a counseling program, my, um, again, internship hours must also be completed. So they also complete those hours under the LPC Supervisor. So referrals for these counseling services are submitted to the LPC Supervisor by our school counselor. They go through, just like in a regular clinic, in a traditional mental health clinic, they do treatment goals with the client, um, with the parent. They also review those with the LPC Supervisor and also making sure that the school counselor who submitted the referral is also part of that consultation to keep them in the loop. They do, um, specific therapies and techniques, including cognitive therapy, behavioral therapy, play therapy. We do have the, um, younger students who our counselors utilize, things like play therapy, um, expressive art therapy, motivational interviewing, and mindfulness activities. Again, I mentioned last time, the issues that we are seeing, panic attacks, anxiety, um, helping our students increase their self-esteem, working on communication skills, family dynamic behaviors, stress management, helping our students work through past traumas, bullying, grief anger management, and depression. So this school year, we're very proud that we were able to offer, again, at no cost to the families, individual counseling services to thirty-eight students. And we were very proud that this year, we were also able to provide services to our, um, parents, be able to provide some adult services. And in addition, something new we did this semester was also bringing family counseling. So bringing, able to bring in the family unit to work on family issues together through family counseling. Then we did group, again, we mentioned that, um, we're trying to work on increasing the number of groups. So we did have groups for each grade level. And the group topics, again, were decided on based on feedback from our school counselors as far as what issues they felt our students needed, needed that support with. So at the elementary level, we had five elementary students who did group on cultural skills. Our middle school students, looking specifically, working with our girls and increasing their self-esteem. And then at the high school level, we had twelve high school students who participated in a group on anxiety and specifically teaching them mindfulness activities to help them as they are having those feelings of anxiety come on. So that is, again, one option that we have. The other option that we also strongly utilize, again, is our A New Today Counseling Services. So this is, again, gonna be mental health counseling provided for students by a licensed professional counselor, so again, an LPC, who is going to provide those services at a student's home campus during the school day. So for our A New Today Counseling Services, the referrals completed by the school counselor, so again, that's going to come many times after, um, meeting with the parent. Well, the parent does, of course, have to, for both of these services, does have to complete the referral form, has to sign off on approval. has to sign off on approval for services. Um, but whether it is based off of the parents coming to the counselor stating they need, um, some more support, maybe they've noticed changes at home, or we've had issues as far as things like discipline changes, um, academic issues, change in family dynamics. So, those are a lot of times when parents will come seeking support from our school counselors. Um, or it could be, again, another staff member who's, again, maybe seeing some concerning behaviors by a student. Or, we do have, especially, of course, at the secondary level, students who will come in and self-refer and let their school counselor know that they, um, know that there's something going on within themselves and what support can they provide for them. So, um, the counselors will provide, will complete those referrals, submit those directly to me, and then I will, in turn, we will submit those to A New Today. For A New Today Counseling Services, again, because this is contract services, they do bill per session. So, we do ask that when, um, we approve these services, most of our students will provide, see, there's Medicaid insurance that is billed. We do have some of our families who may not have those, um, either of those options for payment, so we will either look at that when we would then do the referral to the after-school, to our in-house clinic, or if it is something that we still need to be more extensive, or perhaps the student is not gonna have access to attend the clinic, since it is up after-school at a different site than their home campus, then that's where we would, or I would re- um, approve them for our initiative funding. So, we do have some funding available for that. So, this school year, we have had one hundred and seventy-five students who have been serviced by A New Today Counseling. So, that's gonna be the breakdown there, ninety-five students at the high school, forty-three at the middle school, thirty-seven at the elementary, and that includes students at the pre-K level. So, we do have students in this pre-K school, parents are reaching out for those supports. Um, that's going to, you can see the increase there, especially at the middle school and elementary, you can see those numbers almost doubled from last year. So, at the, um, high school level, we've had a jump there as well. Um, but we have seen, again, especially at the middle and elementary levels, our numbers increasing. Um, part of that is we feel that our parents are being more open, we're having more conversations about mental health, trying to remove that stigma, because we know that there is at times a stigma associated, um, with needing to address mental health issues. So, we have continued to work to, um, again, have those conversations, have those conversations about what mental health is and that there are supports, that there are supports and that we're here to provide those supports. Um, so, that's where we're at as far as A New Today Counseling Services. We do also sometimes, maybe this isn't the right fit, maybe our parents don't want their child school during the school day, um, or other reasons, so if that is the case, or they're not going to be able to do our after-school clinic, we do also have a list of agencies that we provide to our parents. We have, every school counselor has that on their school counseling website as part of the resources available, and we will go through that with them if they opt to select a different service other than the ones that we provide here in-house. And that's all I have for you today. Do I have any questions or any follow-ups?
Yes, thank you so much for your presentation, it is always very informative. Um, because of the climate that we're in right now and the mental health issues that are coming up, and of course, all our shootings and things of that nature, this is why we wanna, I, I've gotten some questions from board members, and so we wanted to kind of bring you back, and I thank you for that.
Absolutely. One thing, I'm sorry if I can mention that, and that's a conversation that we've been having amongst our counselors as well and in, um, within our office of academics. We have actually been discussing and looking at our school counseling program and really wanting to ensure that our school counselors are spending that time during their school day really focusing on the different components of their program. Our school counselors do have to log their time so that we can, um, confirm that, yes, they are spending, part of it is a new law that came about about, I think, we're on our third year now, it was Senate Bill 179, that states that our school counselors must spend at least eighty percent of their school day working specifically on the elements of the school counseling program. So, they do submit those logs, and that's really helped open up the conversations between our school counselors and their administrators, so that we can see that data and where is it that we're spending our time. And at some of our campuses, that has also helped us become aware of, okay, if we're seeing two campuses with similar demographics, but we're seeing responsive services being much higher at one campus versus another, okay, what can we do to help support and help address that? So, that's, that's really helped us have those conversations. Um, so, as we move into next school year, again, as I mentioned, we know that we need to continue to strengthen that because there's just so many things going on in the world, and, um, whatever we can do to provide interventions and prevention so we're not having to be reactive after the fact. So, um, we have brought in administrators and counselors to look at how can we continue, because, you know, our school counselors are gonna be the, on the front line of that. So, what can we do to ensure that we are best utilizing them? So, really reimagining, re-envisioning what the role of that school counselor is. So, we're gonna continue to have that conversation, we're actually planning to bring in administrators over the summer to do a specific training with them, so that we are all speaking that same language and having the same expectations of our counseling programs within the district.
One of the things that, that, uh, that came to mind, and I know that's on the mind of other board members, is that i- i- when they're, when this student goes into Tier Two, um, and then gets out of Tier Two, goes into Tier Three, when they re-engage back after they've had their treatment at Tier Three, right? They've been referred out, maybe they were, um, a- at a hospital and stuff and, and getting treatment there. Now, they re-enter, what happens with that student upon re-entry? Um, what supports are there for that student?
Typically, depending on the scenario, especially for that example, if there's students hospitalized, if there was an extreme, um, situation regarding student safety or safety of others, we do have a plan, we call it our, our Student Safety Plan. So, there is a listing that the school counselor does when the student re-enters the campus, ensuring that the student is aware of what their triggers possibly are, aware of who is that safe adult that they can go to when they are having that potential feeling of getting to that crisis level, ensuring that teachers are aware, again, with permission of the student and parent, but aware to the, um, to the limit of what the counselor feels is appropriate to share with a teacher and what the student and parent are comfortable with, but letting them know that, okay, if the student asks to see the counselor, please allow that because we have the safety plan, and this is gonna be, maybe we need to come up with a, a key word or a key phrase that the student's gonna share with you to let them know that, you know what, I, I really need to see my counselor. Um, some of our campuses are blessed to have space to have calming rooms as well as a space where we can, you know what, sometimes we just need to take five, we need to take five, take some breaths to regulate, and we're very blessed that some of our, our campuses do have those spaces. We've given our counselors other tools, things like sand trays, um, to be, um, to have the resources, whether it's in a calming room or in a corner within their office, to try to help support students regulating, um, as possibly part, part of that re-entry plan.
Uh, any questions from the board? Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Reese, for all your work. So, clarification following up on what, uh, Mr. Trevino's saying. So, they've been identified, the student, the student comes back to the campus, now it falls on the teachers and the administrators to follow up on it?
No, 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 it's gonna be a team effort. So, the counselor will be, when the student re-enters, the counselor will sit with the student and hopefully the parent, when the parent, if the parent brings them back to campus, to have that, um, re-entry plan. So, but the teacher, the student, when they're in the classroom, we want the teacher to be cognizant, to be aware of, you know what, this student has had, um, you know, some type of a, um, mental health intervention, just to be aware of the signs of, of students who may possibly go, be going into a zone of dysregulation, so we can, before it escalates to a point where it's gonna be that much more challenging to bring this student back to a level of calm, um, just to be aware of that. And possibly, what are some techniques that maybe the teacher, again, depending on what the teacher's comfortable with, can use within the classroom, or to know that, you know what, I'm not comfortable with that, I need to send the student to the counselor.
Dr. Salazar?
So, I would liken it to the special services program where there's, there's a transfer art, you're transferring back in, but the teacher needs to be aware so that, in the same way that we do differentiation in the classroom, the teacher is aware of triggers that might be, uh, prompting some behaviors in students and how to, how to de-escalate that. So, it really is, and she describes a, a real team effort, um, but communication is key if we're gonna be successful.
And I think that's where we were concerned with, those procedures are already in place, there's already a safety word, the teacher's already being, you know, they're in the loop, you know what I'm saying?
Definitely, definitely, and that goes back to that idea of stigma. We don't want it to be like, oh, this is a secret, the student's returning, we don't want anybody to know. We need to be willing to have those conversations. Um, so that's why we feel it is important to let the teacher know, whether it's the teacher, if the student, um, you know, self-conking at the elementary level, the team of teachers, if the student at the secondary level. Sometimes it may also involve extracurricular, your coaches, your directors, your band directors, music directors and so forth. Um, you know, anybody who plays that, that role with the student. For our after-school programs, um, such as, you know, our band, our athletics, also making sure that they're aware of, you know what, if this student stops coming to practice, that could be a red flag also that something's going on. So, our counselors do have great relationships with, um, those, to sponsor those extracurricular activities because, um, that can also be a sign of concern for students.
So, we have had some students make out cries, terroristic threats, and, and that was kind of what prompted like, what are we doing with that student? And so, that's the procedures that you've outlined right now for us is the re-engagement.
And, and, Mr. Trevino, we wanna thank you for the opportunity to present this in- information. Each time we do it, we get to internalize it, well, this kind of sets the stage for, um, a discussion we'll have in, in closed session that will give you specifics into what are we doing when a student exhibits a threat or makes a threat or, or exhibits some mental, mental health issues. We'll give you specific examples that we can only do in executive session. And so, I wanna thank, um, Mrs. Reese and, and all of our, all of our counselors. We concern ourselves with educating the whole child. Tonight, we celebrated the accolades, but there's so much that goes into getting the children to perform at levels of which, which you saw today. It, it, we, if you don't concern yourself with the in- the whole child, you don't experience a level of success that we, we see here today. A lot of times, um, there's, there's, we make you aware of, of some of the issues that we're dealing with, uh, that's our responsibility, um, but so many, so often, our counselors and our administrators intervene in ways that lead to the success that you saw celebrated here today. And that is our goal for, for every child, to make sure that they're achieving their full, their full potential. We can only, again, only achieve that if we take care of mental, their mental health as well.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Ms. Reese.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to District Reports, uh, Agenda Item Number Nine. Dr. Salazar?
Sir, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a brief overview, you know, reports that we listed here tonight. The portfolio report, I would begin with portfolio report, there is an item on our budget amendments that allows us to bring in some of the revenue that's been generated by, by our investments. So, we're, we're pleased with that additional source of revenue that for years was lacking when interest rates were lower. So, now we have a little bit of, uh, uh, additional revenue to offset the higher expenses, higher costs of, um, of various things that, uh, that we have, that, um, uh, various costs, uh, con- uh, dealing with our op- operation of our school district. Tax collection report, uh, you saw that, uh, we're, this year, we're at about ninety-one percent when compared to this time last year. Uh, so, when, if you compare to the ninety-one to the ninety-three percent, um, it seems like we're a little further behind, but reality is, we budgeted a little bit more this year than we did last year of our total tax collections. And so, we're actually in the same place, it's just a, a larger number that we're dealing with. Um, the, uh, third report there is the summary of revenue and expenditure, uh, status reports. We really like, like where we are, uh, we are, uh, just where we need to be at this time of the year. Remember that our, our budget will take us through July, uh, July thirty-first, at the end of, end of July. Um, monthly disbursements, uh, if there are any questions on any of the checks that have been issued out, we like to bring those reports to you, uh, each month. And budget adjustments, although, uh, the board does not approve budget adjustments, we also like to bring those to you each month, uh, for transparency. Uh, at a recent Budget and Facilities Committee meeting, we covered our capital project funds, and in keeping with what we, we stated there, again, another item for transparency, we told you we are going to keep you informed on, uh, the status of our bond projects and how much it, it has cost us, as well as the, uh, local capital project fund. Um, federal programs update, we did have two grants that, uh, that we are also bringing in, uh, we have another item in connection with, uh, some of the grants, uh, for, one, one of the grants, uh, that is listed in this report is the safety grant, little over half a million that will reimburse us for some of the expenses. We suspect we'll put that right back into, uh, safety and security. Uh, we're going to be doing the 3M film on windows and, certain windows and doors to make sure that we have shatterproof, shatterproof windows and doors in just the right places. And then, uh, the Dual Language Academy, I'm sorry, Early Childhood Literacy and Math Goals. Uh, Mrs. Landry presented the, uh, Early Childhood Literacy and Math, again, in keeping with Hospital Three. Next month, we will bring you the CCMR goals. Um, those are part of the, uh, requirements of Hospital Three, but we are waiting to see if TA will put, uh, will finalize the CCMR goals for next year. Um, we did include a portion of that report in your packet, but we'll bring you a presentation, uh, the next time that we meet. Um, and then there's a Dual Language Academy update. Um, in your packet, you have a QR code. If you scan that QR code, um, you'll see a, uh, really cool video, um, of testimonials from teachers about their experiences with the dual language. We are going to, each year, we've, we move into another grade level. We started with pre-K, this coming year, we'll move dual language into, uh, our first grade. And teachers were saying where they were once anxious and did not know how, how things would go, they are seeing, um, return on investment and very excited. I encourage you to visit, uh, that, that site and, and experience that video if you haven't done so already. And then, uh, we round things out with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council Legislative Visits. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Stumball, uh, to come up and give you a quick overview of some of the information that is already, uh, in a slide deck in your packets.
Good evening, President Trevino and members of the board, Dr. Salazar. Last Tuesday, Dr. Salazar and I had an opportunity to take seven students from his Superintendent Student Advisory Council to Austin. They had a very quick tutorial crash course from Razor Hands Texas on how to effectively engage with elected officials, and then they immediately put what they learned into practice and had visits with Senator LaMontea, Representative Gomes, Representative Longoria, and Representative Lopez. Our profile of a graduate tells us that we want graduates to be effective communicators, conscientious citizens, and we want them to, um, participate and understand the democratic process. And I can tell you that those seven kids can definitely check that off their list. You would have been so proud to watch them speak. Um, there are pictures and quotes in the report, and I hope you'll take the time to look at those. They represented us very well.
They had a, they had an opportunity to pick what they were going to advocate for. Uh, we, uh, Razor Hands Texas did a beautiful job of prepping them and, and teaching them the, the power of story uh, and specificity when, uh, to make, to make your message memorable, um, can you?
Nobody cares about your opinion, they just wanna hear a story connected to that opinion. It's great advice.
What are some of the things they advocated for?
Well, teacher pay, uh, teacher planning time, um, and then, uh, very eloquently, well-spoken fifth grader who talked about the importance of full day pre-K and how half the day should be spent teaching curriculum and the other half of the day should be on social emotional learning to avoid some of the things that we've been talking about tonight, and that if we had, um- And that if we had, um, a stronger foundation across the state, that we wouldn't have to have these tier-two and tier-three, yes, fifth grader. Um, and also, um, state testing, um, and not just the fact that, you know, they don't want to take a test, these are kids who understand that they need to be held accountable, but that, um, they felt very strongly that one test on one day doesn't define them as a student, and it doesn't define their teacher, and it doesn't define their school, and that they should be measured on so much more.
Yeah, and we said, we're not defined by a letter rating, not even the A. So, um, thank you, Mrs. Stumball, for putting that together. Those are all the reports we have. If anyone has any questions, we would entertain those at this time, sir.
Any questions from the board? No, no questions. Okay, yep, thank you so much, uh, Dr. Stumball. I, we really appreciated that, and I'm sure those kids got a heck of an experience that they will not forget. Um, and we need more of them. We need more, more kids like that and stuff. And it's amazing how they, they, um, kind of hit right to the center and the heart of things and stuff, you know? So, super proud of you all and having them engage in that type of experience. Thank you. All right. Roman numeral number ten, consent agenda. I'm going to have the board, uh, review and pull any items that they feel they need to pull at this time. Mr. Amaya.
Chairman, I'd like to, uh, pull item number five.
Okay, we'll pull number five. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry, we're going to pull number five and we'll come back to that. So, uh, do I have a motion for consent agenda items one through four and six through nine? Mr. Castillo.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya? I have a motion and a second. All those, uh, any discussion, I'm sorry? There's no discussion. Uh, that's right. Uh, so, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items number one through four and six through nine, please raise your hand. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Um, we want to go back to, uh, number five. Consider and approve the memorandum of understanding for B C F S Health and Human Services, B C F S H H S for the twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion? Mr. Henderson.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for B C F S Health and Human Services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, thank you for the second. Um, this, no, an action item, right? Any discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chairman, first my apologies for not doing my complete homework on this. When I saw, when I saw the item, I do have a family member, but it's a third-degree blood relations, uh, so it should not constitute, and after checking with legal, it doesn't constitute a conflict of interest, but there may be some optics issue there, and I'd hate to draw any kind of negative attention either on this company or on this, on this board, uh, that might take us away from the work that they're trying to do for us. That, and secondarily, there's no, there's no money involved that we can see. But as I sit here, and this is not a question I asked earlier, there's only four of us. Do we have to have four that vote, or just three is the majority of the quorum? Because...
You have a quorum present, and I believe that is sufficient, but I'll defer to leave.
So three people voting in favor would constitute a legal action?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Amaya. So we've got a first and second, we've had discussion. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding, M O U, for B C F S Health and Human Services, B C F S H H S for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, please raise your hand. We have three, uh, voting to approve and one... Thank you so much. And the, um, action item passes. All right, next we go to, uh, the agenda, Roman numeral eleven, action items. We have ten, uh, action items to go through tonight. So first, action item, discuss and take action to approve agreement contract C S P twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-five with food service management company contract amendment number one to Southwest Food Service Excellence LLC, S F E, for school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, save a little time, I move that we, uh, approve this agreement as read by our chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Um, so... All right, so then, um, anybody want to second that? Mr. Henderson? Got a first and second discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of approving agreement contract C S P twenty-one, twenty-five, thirty-five for, with food service management company contract amendment number one to Southwest Food Service Excellence LLC, S F E, for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously, four zero. Number two, discuss and take action to approve substantial completion of the Leo Aguilar Stadium's new turf project. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo.
Motion to approve as read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving substantial completion of Leo Aguilar Stadium's new turf project, please raise your hand. Action passes unanimously. Number three, discuss and take action to approve agreement contract with the Holzworth Center for Continuing Education Program. We were going to table that one.
Not a table, but I will have an item for joint discussion.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, uh, just a quick little change, and I think that doesn't it take away from the intent of what was posted? Uh, as y'all were looking through your packets, you saw that he has the statement of agreement and contract, and we were awaiting a contract and it didn't get here. The review of this, of this whole program was given to us when we had that joint, uh, and it was very detailed, including the cost. So I'd hate for us, and I know the Holzworth Center and, uh, the type of people that are trying to get in there, and it, I'd hate for us to lose our position to this kind of training because we didn't, uh, act on it. So with your permission, I'd want to move to, uh, approve the agreement contract pending review and approval by legal to the Holzworth Center for the Continuing Education Program.
Yep. Anybody want to second that motion? Mr. Henderson? We have a first and a second, any discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Coach, thank you for making that motion and saying how unfortunate it is. I do want to point everyone to page two fifty-five, the second paragraph. I just think it's important that it goes on record that, again, this is an investment that our superintendent and the administration is making on employees, and it says in the second paragraph, proprietary leadership development curriculum based on cutting-edge research delivered to school districts through a Holzworth program. It's a proprietary four-year degree of a graduate program designed to develop and implement, and implemented by Holzworth to help school district grow a strong bench of outstanding campus leaders. And I appreciate, uh, the superintendent investing his time. I know we've had several executive members of the cabinet attend, and it's out of their personal time, so I appreciate those of what Coach is saying, we need to make sure we invest in it, so thank you.
Any other comments? I want to echo that. That is a great commitment, and we've invested a lot of money, and I know that we're going to see a great return on that, and so we just want to thank everybody involved with this project. Okay, we've got a first and second, we've gone through our comments, let's do the voting. So all those in favor of approving agreement or contract pending review with legal with the Holzworth Center for the Continuing Education Program, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously, four zero. Number four, discuss and take action to renew agreements or contracts for property equipment breakdown and terrorism insurance, C S P number nineteen dash twenty dash thirty-nine with various insurers as proposed by Hub International Agent effective May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this, uh, motion as you have read it.
Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo? Any, uh, discussion? There being no discussion, all those, uh, in favor of renewing agreement contracts for property equipment breakdown and terrorism insurance, C S P number nineteen dash twenty dash thirty-nine with various insurers as proposed by Hub International Agent effective May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Number five, discuss and take action to approve the schematic design for the multipurpose performing arts center as submitted by architectural and design firm of Megamorphosis. Do I have a motion? Mr. Henderson? Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the schematic design for the multipurpose performing arts center as submitted by the architectural and design firm of... Please raise your hand. Action passes unanimously. Sorry. Number six, discuss and take action to approve out-of-state student travel, A C T E, Sea Perch Robotics Nationals, College Park, Maryland, May eleventh through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Prove as read.
Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving out-of-state C T E Sea Perch Robotics National College Park, Maryland, May eleventh through the fourteenth, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Number seven, discuss and take action to approve School Health Advisory Council Shack adoption of Good Heart dash Wilcox Health Curriculum. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Move to approve as read.
Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson? Any discussion? There being no discussion, uh, all those in favor of approving School Health Advisory Council Shack adoption of the Good Heart dash Wilcox Health Curriculum, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Number eight, discuss and take action to approve a resolution calling on the Texas Legislature to reject, Texas Legislature, to reject all attempts to divert public funds away from public schools in the form of vouchers, taxpayer savings grants, educational savings accounts, or any other mechanism that have the effect of reducing funding to public schools. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chairman, I want to take the pleasure, and that's going to give me a lot of pleasure.
It gives me pleasure too, sir.
We're not going to read the whole resolution, but I want to, uh, I want to move to approve a resolution calling on the Texas Legislature. I almost added something there. To reject all attempts to divert public dollars away from public schools in the form of vouchers, taxpayer savings grants, educational savings accounts, or any other mechanism, uh, that have the effect of reducing funding for public schools.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving a resolution calling on the Texas Legislature to reject all attempts to divert public dollars away from public schools in the form of vouchers, taxpayer savings grants, education savings accounts, or any other mechanism that have the effect of reducing funding to public schools, please raise your hand. Thank you. Action item passes unanimously. Number nine, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, A, assistant speech pathologist. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Move to approve as read.
Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, A, assistant speech pathologist, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Is the assistant speech pathologist here? Okay, thanks. Number ten, yay! Discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, A, teachers. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo? Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, A, teachers, please raise your hand. Action item passes unanimously. Anybody here? Nope, all right. Number twelve, closed session. Number one, discuss all items appropriate regarding personnel recommendations. Number two, deliberate the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices and security audit findings. And number three, discuss real estate matters. We will go into closed session at eight oh seven. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Eight five six.
Hello, hello. It is eight fifty-six and we are back in open session. Yeah, it's a topic everyone's gone on, so, okay, no worries. Eight fifty-six. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we are, uh, personnel recommendations, authorized administration. All right, so, we have a, I need a motion. Uh, number two, discuss and take possible action to authorize administration to proceed with real estate matters as discussed in executive session. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize administration to proceed with real estate matters as discussed in executive session.
Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of authorizing administration to proceed with real estate matters as discussed in executive session, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Brings us to announcements. Dr. Salazar?
Mr. Thirvenio and members of the board, um, the team's announcements are Saturday, April twenty-second, from nine to one P M., we will have an Earth Day celebration at the city of Los Presnos Nature Park. Um, the district will participate. Thursday, April twenty-seventh, we have a six P M. employee banquet at the Brownsville Events Center. Always, always a pretty cool event.
Thursday the what?
Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at six P M. Uh, it's coming up. So, Bell Awards, Teachers of the Year.
It's very nice.
Monday, May the eighth, is our regular school board meeting, and those are all the announcements I have this time.
Where are we going to have that?
Uh, the Brownsville Events Center? Yes.
All right.
Just for information.
I know, I know.
That's not a smirk coming out.
Motion to adjourn.
Pretty soon, we'll have a...
Don't have to.
Not for that, that Brownsville Center. Sure, we won't.
All right. Okay, if nothing else, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.